Nice touch, Mike. Very nice.
Welcome. Thanks.
All set, Brett?
We are all set.
Okay, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so start the meeting. We just need a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of February 14th. Accept and order file the minutes of committee on special education for the listed dates. Accept and order file the minutes of the Committee of Preschool Special Education for 221, 228, 33. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Amanda, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let me see. Do we have, well, public comments? We really don't have anything tonight, or put it out there for public comments? So we'll move into our committee reports.
We just need a motion for the special meeting.
Okay.
For March 8th.
Okay. Do we have a motion to... Yep, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on March 8th?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Crystal, seconded by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. So that moves us to our committee personnel. Vince, can you have that, Mr. Cane?
No, Vince, Vince is in here. Made it on yet?
Okay.
So I can, I can go through, or we can wait and push that to the end and see if he is able to get on.
Um, we could push it on unless you feel comfortable going through it real quick. I mean, we could push it on for Vince.
Yeah, let's push it on. If he doesn't come on, I'll do it. Um, I'll do it later on in the agenda.
Okay, uh, we'll move to athletics then for Mike.
Alrighty. I'm gonna be switching to my other screen, so I won't be able to see anybody raising a hand for a question. So if you have something, just speak up. All right, to start with some winter sport recaps. Sad to announce that Mike Pendegras is going to be resigning from his position as head wrestling coach. Mike's been our coach for 12 years. We'd like to thank him for his commitment and dedication to the program and what he has done to help continue the tradition and success of Hudson Falls Wrestling. Thanks, Mike.
I second that.
Uh, also want to offer up congratulations to our winter athletes who were named to the Foothills Council All-Star Teams in their respective sports. I have a list down here. I'll go through those relatively quickly. All right, so for boys' basketball, Peyton Smith was named Foothills Council MVP. Girls' basketball, Seneca Williamson was named first team. Wrestling, Jesse Mullis and Colin Diffie, both named to the first team. We have Justin Mullis, Levi Wilson, Darius and Darius, I apologize, I'm not gonna be able to pronounce your last name. Dom Doyle, Logan Staunton, all named to the second team. And for bowling, we had Braden Wells to the first team. A Treu Wallack to the second team, as well as Cody Edwards. And for boys' swimming and diving, uh, Richard Rosick received an honorable mention. Competitive cheer, uh, it looks like Natalie or Natalia Fuller and Angelina King were both named to the second team. So congratulations to all of our winter athletes. It's a great accomplishment. Um, also, uh, we're happy to announce that we had some of our winter teams recognized by NYSPHSA scholar athlete teams. Uh, to earn this recognition, they have to have 75% of the team roster with a GPA of 90 or higher. This year, our boys' basketball team, our girls' basketball team, competitive cheer and unified bowling all receive those honors. All right, we have two student athletes who have been selected to attend the first ever New York State Public High School Athletic Association Student Leadership Conference, uh, which will be March 30th. Congratulations to Jesse Mullis and Abby Bigelow. Jesse is a junior standout football player and wrestler, uh, both of which he is the team captain for. He's also attending Early College Career Academy for Business and Entrepreneurship at SUNY Adirondack. Abby is a three-sport varsity athlete and was selected as captain of the volleyball team this year as a sophomore and helped them reach the Section 2 finals. Uh, both students are gonna be great representatives for Hudson Falls. We congratulate both of them. All right, spring. This is the first week that JV and varsity practices for spring sports have begun. Modified practice is going to begin Monday, April 3rd. There's still time to get the kids registered for modified sports on the family ID through our district website if you haven't done so. And onto a big topic for us tonight, uh, some merger news. So we have merger applications for the fall 2023 season. Uh, we need to complete these and submit them to Section 2 by April 1st in order for these to happen. The first one is gonna be a renewal merger with Salkland's Falls Central School District for girls' varsity swimming and diving in the fall. And the second is establishing a new merger with Fort Edward Union Free School District for football and game day cheer. And I believe both those items, we're gonna have to, uh, make some action on.
Okay. So regarding the two, um, resolutions, you heard the recommendation from Mike. Um, anybody have any questions pertaining to the merger for swimming? Okay, so be it resolved, the Board of Education Hudson Falls Central School District agrees to the merger with Salkland's Falls for swim and diving at the modified and varsity level for the 2023-24 school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Amanda, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. And for the second recommendation, uh, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the following mergers for all levels for the 2023-24 school year. Approval of the following mergers with Fort Edward Central School District for football and game day cheer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mike, seconded by?
Second.
Amanda, all in favor?
Hold on one second. One, one slight change to that motion. It's just Fort Edward UFSD. Union Free School District, not CSD. My apologies on that.
Okay.
Certainly should have saw that before now.
So with the correction for the US. SD?
You got it, UFSD.
USFD?
UFSD, Union Free School District.
UFSD, yep. There it is. Third time's a charm. Union Free School District. Okay, so that carries. Okay, any other questions for athletics? Okay, perfect. That moves us to audit, Ms. Grimaldi.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, so I'll start with the treasures report. Um, this is for the month of January. In our general fund, we had $3.7 million to start with 5.9 in receipts and 5.2 in disbursements, leaving us a balance in the general fund of $4.3 million, um, which puts us in a good position, and then a total cash on hand of $8.5 million. Um, did anyone have any questions on the treasures report? Okay, um, and then on the extracurricular accounts, uh, accounts, there was, um, just some normal activity. There was nothing too significant. This is also for the month of January. Um, just kind of the normal in and out stuff for this time of year, so nothing too significant. Um, that detail is also in board docs if you have any questions, and then the monthly bills were also in board docs. Um, did anyone have any questions on those? Okay, um, and then, so I will let Kevin do, uh, Kevin's, is Kevin on?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll let Kevin do an update, um, on, on budget, and then we also do have in, um, in our packets the, um, notice to the annual school district meeting and election, um, that needs to be posted, um, that we have to make approval of tonight as well, and we do this every year just to give notice of what the, um, propositions will be on the budget and, um, and the Board of Education seats that will be vacant, um, are up for renewal, and then, um, some stuff about buses as well. So that's also in there that we will have to make approval for this evening. Um, do you want to do the budget first before we do approvals, Kevin?
Sure. Um, we met last week, uh, the, the audit committee, uh, we reviewed, we, we reviewed some items in our, in the budget. Um, basically, what we did is kind of, um, went back through, um, different things that we had talked about the month before. Currently, we're sitting in a good spot with budget. Uh, we're waiting for the governor and the legislators, uh, to come together on an agreement on the budget, which should take place somewhere around April 1st, which I believe is a Sunday this year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, I think we talked about that. Um, so we'll be looking probably, it'll either take place on Friday, um, the 30th or on Monday, the 2nd. Uh, but right now, um, we've, we're, we're sitting in a good spot. We've, we've basically got a balanced budget. Uh, we just have to make a few tweaks to it, depending on how the state aid comes in. Um, but a couple of notes that we discussed on the state aid is under the foundation aid. Um, we did receive a large increase in, in foundation aid, um, which again, as we've noted many times, has been, been owed to the district for many years, but there is a $500,000 set aside, uh, which I know it's currently being lobbied to get that into the foundation aid versus having it as a set aside, uh, for designated, designated causes. So, um, we're waiting to watch that carefully. The other thing is, is with our building project, um, and when our construction contracts were signed, uh, we, it, it falls under what's called Chapter 97 of, of the building aid laws, which basically has to do with the timing of when contracts were signed. So our building aid, um, currently is not, um, for the new project is not showing up, even though we will be getting a, a piece of building aid, uh, in the net, in, uh, in 23-24. And we did also discuss the, uh, how critical it is for us to get final cost reports in, on this capital project before December 31st, because that'll be a difference in building aid whether we get a full year's payment or a half year's payment, uh, in that year. So, um, we went through all of these, um, we, we, we discussed the different items that we have. We discussed the different propositions, um, that, that we have in the, um, budget. And we also discussed, um, the property tax cap calculation, which we have to do each year. Um, our cap is 4.15%, uh, so we could go up to that without getting a super majority vote. That's based on the carryover that we've had from year to year over the past couple of years, because the last two years, we've gone out with a zero on the tax levy. So it allows you to carry some of the money over that you could have used in those previous years. Um, so that's the calculation. So, um, basically, we're gonna be, um, at, at the next meeting, we're gonna be finalizing everything, uh, what we're looking at, tax levies, things like that, um, and, and all the pieces should fit together. But like I said, we're in a, we're in a good spot right now moving forward with budget.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Um, one of the things I just wanted to highlight on the, um, that I wanted to highlight on the, with the propositions was the energy performance contract. Is that getting approved in here, or is that in buildings and grounds?
Buildings, grounds.
Okay, I thought so. So that's just, that's part of the proposition that we're also approving for this, um, notice that is going, going out to the public, that's all. Uh, I think that's all I had. Jeff, did you want to do the approvals of treasurer's report and then also of the?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so anybody have any questions pertaining to the audit committee report? Okay, so at this point in time, we just need a motion to approve the January 2023 treasures report?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Mike, seconded by?
Second.
Vince, there you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The second resolution, uh, is regarding the budget vote legal ad, which, um, includes the annual, uh, school district meeting and election notice. So be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the 2023-24 legal ad. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Crystal, seconded by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries.
One thing before you jump to transportation, um, with the timing of spring break this year being the second week of April, we, um, scheduled our board meeting for the first week in April. Um, and Kevin's right, uh, the, the first fall is actually on a Saturday, which gives the governor until Monday, the 3rd for that budget to be released, which means, um, if there is a lot of change in what comes out at the end, the final approved budget, um, he may have some tweaking to do, and we, he will do his very, very best to have it done for the 4th. But if not, we may need to have a special meeting, but we won't know until that time comes. I just want to put that on the radar. And, uh, Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's what I, what you and I had discussed.
That's, that's, that's exactly right. Depending, depending on if it, if it comes right on time on the 1st, which they used to try to get it done like midnight the night before, um, so they could, you know, we, we're gonna have to do some tweaking, but we should have time, because they'll give me basically two days to do it, to get that done. But if it falls into Tuesday or stuff like that, we may not be able to, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to make a decision on Monday, um, on that, Dan, and, and whether we'll be able to go forward with it Tuesday, or we'll have to wait till a special meeting.
Yep, and, and that special meeting would have to be relatively quickly thereafter, so we can get everything for our budget newsletter and all the other notices that have to pick. Well, again, just giving everybody a heads up ahead of time.
Okay. That moves us to transportation. Dr. Steele? Turn your mic on, Brian.
There, that's better. Um, okay, you can read the DOT report there. The trip report is right there as well. The big news with the transportation department this month is we've actually hired another, uh, driver. He's going through his training, and, um, I guess we're gonna use him as a substitute bus driver once he passes that. Um, a little update on our, our buses from last year. The 66-passenger bus that we ordered last fall, looks like it may be en route, needs to be inspected, and hopefully we'll be at our facility soon. Um, and we also ordered two other, uh, Chevy 28-passenger buses from last year. They should be here this fall for, next fall for the upcoming school year, so, um, pretty short report this year, that, or this, this month, that's it.
Okay, anybody have any questions regarding transportation? All right, that moves us to building, building's new round, Mr. Yellow.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm gonna jump around here a little bit, um, as, as far as the order goes here. First on the capital project, um, and, and I know this very much pleased Mr. Ward and Mr. Polency. No newfound conditions, so, uh, no, no surprises. That's great news. And everything else is, is going according to plan and pretty much on target, so I think that's, uh, that's good news as well, and, and we're moving forward on it. Um, next item, uh, the annual pesticide resolution that we, uh, we pass annually, uh, for the lawn care as well as the notification. Um, any questions on that from the board? Okay, and, uh, Jeff will ask for a motion on that in, in a minute. And then the final, uh, item is the EPC, and I'm gonna defer to Dan and Kevin to go into a little bit more detail on that. There is some, uh, a couple of spreadsheets in your packet. I'm sure you've taken a look at that. Um, and, uh, they can explain a little bit more in detail on the whole project and the timing and the status of it.
Yep. Kevin, you want me to go first?
Lead us off.
All right, sounds good. Uh, so you can see in the spreadsheets, uh, a, a lot of calculations there. Basically, it's showing you the total value of the project. It also talks to the number of years it takes for that, each individual line of that spreadsheet, that part of the project, to repay the district, and, uh, the, the basic information that you'd want to see, when you get down to the bottom, it has to be under a certain number of years. Uh, we made it under a certain number of years. Couple of things that might stick out to you when you look at it line by line by line. Um, and especially if you look at it and see that one item that's got the green line across there, that's the boilers in the boiler room. And if you go across to the right-hand, right-hand column, you'll see that it takes something like 70, I don't have it open, because I'm trying to look at the camera, 70-point something years, uh, for the boiler project piece to be paid off. Um, as you're aware, we had to cut the boiler project out of our regular capital project. We're able to capture it here, um, and it is allowable. It is an appropriate, um, use of this type of project. And because of all the other work we're able to do, that is paid back in much less than the required number of years, um, the average comes out below what we need it to be. So it comes out below the 18-year payback. So it's an allowable project. It lets us capture a lot of the work that we had to cut out of our capital project due to the price escalation that we saw when we went out for our first bid, um, we continued to see when we found out our second bid. Um, so I really wanna, uh, pat the Buildings and Grounds Committee on the back and thank them for allowing us to look at, in the, in a tire board, for allow us to look at a couple of different ways to, to capture that work and, and get it done for the district. Uh, so that comes in cost neutral for the district after the energy savings. The two resolutions that are, um, in front of the board tonight, one is to approve moving forward with the project itself. Uh, so the project can move forward. The project does not require voter approval. The project requires board approval. But the second proposition in front of you tonight in this section of our meeting is to go and put, um, this in front of the public on our budget vote date, asking them for permission to go forward, and, uh, and if they give us permission to go forward to seek the extra 10% or almost 10% aid, depending on how the project finally books out. Uh, so that's what the public will be voting on, uh, not to stop the project, not to stop it at all, but to allow us to go and get an additional 10% of New York State building aid on the project. Uh, so the project is, is, is debt neutral for us, even if the public were to say no to us going out and trying to get the additional state aid when May, uh, I think it's May 18th this year, I think is the budget vote, 16th, uh, May 16th. Uh, so, so that's, just want to be aware of the difference. The first one is for us to go forward with the project. That means the project's gonna happen either way with those cost numbers in front of you. The second is to put it out to the public to get that, to try to capture that additional 10% aid. And as I always say, um, those are New York State tax dollars. I understand that completely. So why not bring those New York State tax dollars back to Hudson Falls, back to our school district? So you'll hear me say that a few more times at least, um, in my time at Hudson Falls, probably a lot more times than you want to hear that likely. Kevin, what I, what I missed, or what information do you think is important for folks to have?
Uh, Dan, I think you, I think you covered it all. Um, you know, one of the reasons, um, just to reiterate something that Dan said, that with an EPC, there doesn't need to be voter approval, um, to go forward and do the work, and it's based on the concept that the energy performance savings pays for the project. That's why we don't have to have voter approval just to move forward with the project. But however, to get the additional 10% aid, that's where you needed the voter approval. So just to reiterate that, um, I think you covered everything else well, Dan.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say one more thing one time. Uh, it's important for me to say again that the majority of the work that we're capturing in the EPC is work that the voters did approve to be included in our capital project. We just couldn't do it because of the costs. So the voters were good with the work back when they voted on that project. Uh, we're just finding a different way to do it, because I always, uh, I, I want to be careful when we say we don't need voter approval to move ahead, which is completely true. In this case, we had voter approval for the work. We just didn't have enough money inside of our capital project to move forward without running it through this EPC.
And one last point, too. Um, we, we talked about the public education piece to make sure everybody understands what this program is all about. And again, anytime that the savings are not met, it's not covered by us. It's covered by the contractor. So there's, there's, um, there's not a lot of downside to this, because if they did their calculations incorrectly and the energy costs, uh, I should say the energy savings are not there, it is not out of our pocket, it's out of their pocket. And, and I think again, that, that's gonna be a real key component to the education piece for, for the public before this goes for the vote.
Yep, that's, it's a great point. I can't believe I forgot to say that, Mark, so thank you.
Okay. Is that, uh, we're all set with that, Mark? We can get the resolutions taken care of?
Yeah, we got the three resolutions too by the project, and then the one for the pesticide.
Okay, so the first one we'll do is the pesticides. So be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the 2023 pesticide application and long program submitted by Dave McKeegan. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
So moved by Mark, seconded by Crystal. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries. So the other two, um, are regarding the EPC. Uh, be it resolved, the Board of Education of Hudson Falls Central School District approves moving forward with the energy performance contract submitted by Dan Ford and reviewed by March Associates. Do we have a, a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Crystal, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. So the last resolution, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the district to seek the additional New York State aid, potentially 10% available for the energy performance contract by seeking voter approval at our scheduled May 16th, 2023 vote. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Crystal, seconded by?
Second.
Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Opposed? That carries. Perfect. Okay. Any other questions for Buildings and Grounds? All right, we move on to policy. Amanda?
Okay, Policy Committee did not actually meet this month because we only had one item on the agenda, and it was a second read. Nobody had any questions about it. So you can all see right there is Policy 8450, home, hospital, or institutional instruction. And it basically just expands on a current policy so that it's updated to match state ed regulations. It adds some definitions and requires us to provide home bounds, like hospital, for example, instruction and setup procedures for doing so. So does anyone have any questions about that?
That's all I have.
Did we do a motion to approve the second read?
So moved.
Okay, so that would be for Policy 8450, um, approved by Crystal, seconded by?
Second.
Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And last but not, no, actually, we gotta go back to personnel a little bit, but for advocacy, Heidi?
Okay, I don't have much for you. We, uh, met, Dan and I went to the ASBA meeting on February 16th, which was about, um, legal matters before Boards of Education. Um, some of the highlights of that conversation was, um, managing public comments, what's appropriate for executive sessions, when to meet, um, with your lawyer, um, filling short and long-term vacancies on the board, um, changing mascots, which has become locally relevant, but thankfully not to us. Um, and, um, their next meeting is on March 23rd, and I believe our kids are the musical guests, and I'm very upset because my own son is playing, and I won't be there. So cheer him on, take some video for me. Um, and then I just want to put in a plug for Lynn King, the president of ASBA. There's a steering committee meeting coming up on June 1st, and they're looking for participants to that. So if anybody has the time or compunction, um, that would be great. And then I wasn't sure, Dan, if you wanted to talk a little bit about your lobbying efforts this past week down in Albany?
Yep, I, I would love to. Uh, give me one second. Uh, so yeah, we spent a full day, uh, the Wishwee advocacy team down, um, in Albany on March 9th. It's our first set of in-person meetings, uh, since before the pandemic. So we were able to meet with several senators, and I'll, I'll go through the, the list really quickly. Uh, Mark Walzak, Dan Stack, Robert Smullen, um, Assemblyman Simpson, Senator Jake Ashby, Assemblywoman Mary Beth Walsh, Assembly- Assemblywoman Mary Beth Walsh, Assemblyman Scott Bendat, and Senator Jim Tesco, and last but not least, Assemblywoman Carrie Warner. So it was a good day. We spent our time talking about a few, a few specific talking points, which you guys have heard about several times. First being foundation aid, and certainly you know from what Kevin has said about where we're looking at our budget this year, that our work in advocating for foundation aid over the last few years has been answered, especially for Hudson Falls in the last two years. So that was our main top, our number one topping point. We also spoke again about increasing state support for career and technical education, and you've heard everyone talk about that a little bit. Universal free meals for all students. So again, I'm working for the greater good, not just for Hudson Falls on that committee. As you all know, our students have community eligibility, so all of our students in Hudson Falls do get free breakfast and lunch already. But other school districts during the pandemic, due to funds provided by the federal government, were allowed to also have free breakfast and lunch. So we're advocating that New York State continue to do that for all students in New York State. And that's that's picked up a lot of traction as well. We also spent quite a bit of time talking about workforce shortages and some of the things that we're asking the legislature to help us to is give us some flexibility on certification, help us get some more pathways for reciprocity from neighboring and even farther away states. And we had a short conversation about the civil service system as well. So it was a great day. And you run all day long. It was nice to be back in the Capitol. So I appreciate the board supporting me, being a part of that committee.
Absolutely. We appreciate you going on there and advocating for us too, Dan. Is that it, Heidi?
That is it for advocacy.
Okay, so there's nothing to resolutions on that. So we'll move back to personnel. Mr. Canadian?
Sorry, I missed the beginning. I was on the other link. I apologize.
No problem.
Personnel is pretty routine this month. They're starting to get ahead or ahead of the curve for summer school appointments. And there are a few tenure appointments, two of them actually, James Murray, Director of Nutrition, Nutrition Services, effective seven three, and Mike DiCaprio, Assistant Superintendent of Education Accountability, effective seven fifteen, twenty twenty-three. And the other highlight I would say would be that Arthur Corlou, Chip, will be with us next year.
Great news.
Other than that, there's nothing that's out of the ordinary.
Okay. So Dan, there's no active resolutions for personnel, correct?
Well, you you would want to approve all of all of the items in the personnel agenda by consent, Jeff.
Yep. So does anybody have any questions regarding personnel? If not on motion by consent, the board approves the personnel agenda.
So moved.
Okay. That moves us to new business, and we have three items to discuss on that. The first one would be for Chief Earl McDuff. There is a resolution to approve the creation of an annual perpetual five hundred dollar scholarship named the Chief Award in memory of Earl Chief McDuff Junior. And the acronym for Chief would be C for Considerate, H for Helpful, I for Invaluable, E for Essential, and F for Friendly. If we all know Chief, that fits him to a T. He served thirty years with our district, approximately thirty years with the district. I think whoever's awarded this, it was, it's a it's a really good scholarship. I feel that to get an additional one with Chief, unfortunately, we lost Chief a month, a month or so ago, and you know, it's it's a great scholarship to have. So anybody have any questions regarding that? Okay, so be resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the creation of the annual perpetual five hundred dollar scholarship named the Chief Award in memory of Earl J. Chief McDuff Junior. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Okay, so moved by Crystal, seconded by Mike, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The second scholarship request is a annual one for the David H. Rozell Scholarship. If you had a chance to read the scholarship details on that. Mr. Ward, I can read it for you because it's identified to you, but it's coming from Lisa Mitzin Rozell. And she's writing, I am writing to request and establish a scholarship in the name of my late father, David H. Rozell. My dad passed away in December of two thousand twenty-one after a brave fire battle with Alzheimer disease. He graduated from Hudson Falls High School in nineteen sixty and was honored on the Wall of Distinction in two thousand six. After marrying my mom, Darlene, they bought a home in Hudson Falls where they lived for forty-eight years. They raised three daughters, all graduating from Hudson Falls High School, Amy nineteen eighty-five, Lisa eighty-six, and Catherine in ninety-five. I was honored on the Wall of Distinction in myself in two thousand nineteen. Dad was a huge proponent of education. He worked for more than three decades for Bosse's as Assistant Superintendent and continued to do the same consulting work at the Albany Bosse's following his retirement. Mom and dad insisted their daughters pursue higher education. We were all fortunate to graduate from Sun, from a SUNY school. He also had a great love for Hudson Falls, having lived there for most of his life. Even toward the end of his illness, he always remembered and talked fondly about this kind of home. It would be a wonderful for my mom, family for my family to honor him in that in this way. The following outlines we would like to establish in his memory. Down here. It states that given annually to a graduating senior, three thousand dollars will be directed to the family student from our family. We would like the scholarship to be granted with the following criteria. A student that plans to attend a SUNY school, a student interested in studying business, accounting, or finance. A student that displays kindness with their peers and community. The scholarship recipient will be chosen by our family, the donors. And that is written by Lisa Rozell Mitzin. Does anybody have any questions pertaining to this request?
I just had one just looking at it. When it says the recipient's going to be chosen by the family or the donors, are they like given a list from the guidance counselor counselors of kids who are, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so normally that's what would happen with folks who are asking to participate in the choosing. They would get a list of folks that meet the criteria and then choose from that or or ask for for a specific list from the guidance office.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the creation of the annual three thousand dollar scholarship named the David H. Rozell Scholarship. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
So moved by, I think it was Heidi?
Amanda.
Not sure. Amanda, seconded by? By Vince, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? That carries. All right, so the last item is a donation that is, that was submitted by David Yur, who's the club president for the Adronic Car Enthusiast. The letter that was submitted states, Dear local school representatives, on behalf of the Ace Car Club, we are delighted to offer you this five hundred dollar donation to be used by the prior arranged group of your choice. Thank you for your patience. Our original goal was to get the donations out this fall, but unfortunately, our club president fell seriously ill. He has made a quick recovery and we are back on track. Our club ran two car shows this past summer and raised five thousand dollars, which we decided to break into five hundred dollar donations to ten area school districts. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication to our community. Sincerely, David Yur, Club President of the Adronic Car Enthusiast. Kevin, just a quick question, like when they say the arranged, who would who would that go to, or have you considered where that money would go to?
Yep. I can speak to it if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, so my understanding is is that money was earmarked for the intermediate school. I know Mr. McTag had conversations with members of the the Adronic Car Enthusiast Club. So that that's that's where that's being earmarked for. And Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, it's so basically what we will do is we take the donation, we will put it in our general fund, but we earmark that money. So then when when the school comes to us and says, this is what we want to do, we want to do this with that money, it's automatically sent that way. So it's it is reserved. It goes into our general fund, but it's reserved.
Perfect. Okay, anybody have any questions pertaining to the donation by Ace? Okay, so be it resolved, the Board of Education for the Hudson Hudson Falls Central School District accepts the five hundred dollar donation from the Adronic Car Enthusiast. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
So moved by Crystal, seconded by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries. So Mr. Ward, Superintendent's report.
Yeah, so thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. So item one on my superintendent's report was the course catalog. So what I'm going to do with that is mention it, and I'm going to tell you that you're going to see it next month. Because I really want you to see it and lay your hands on it. I want to thank the high school counselors along with Mike DiCaprio, Chris McPherson, and our public communication team, so Brett, and then DJ, who we work with from Capri and Bosse's. An awful lot of work went into making a really professional looking course catalog for our school district. It's something that we haven't had either in a long time or ever. So I'll give Mike a few seconds to comment on that, but I I want to show it to you next month. It's really worth having in your hands to see. Mike, anything to add on that that I might have missed?
I don't know that we had one prior. I know that they've been working off of a Google Doc, which the benefit of that is you can edit it on the fly every year. It really came out excellent. It's commensurate with the presentation we're trying to to make for who we are and it came out great. There's student spotlights in there. There's a worksheet in there for the eighth graders as they rise to ninth grade. The graphics that describe some of our departments and the pathways to different diplomas. It's it's great.
Yes, so you'll you'll get to see it and we'll speak about it briefly again on next month. But I just can't be more proud of the work that it's it's a it's a professional document. It's the real deal. So so kudos to everybody who worked on that.
Excellent.
Going back, Heidi mentioned Adricary School Board Association, March twenty-third. That's the next session, and it is the Hudson Falls Chamber Orchestra that will be there. If you would like to go, please let Kelly know so she can RSVP. I will absolutely be there. If Heidi's not going or has a conflict, that means I need a new dinner partner. So I'm hoping that somebody wants to come out here to Chamber Orchestra. And it's a good group. It's the group that that I moderated last year. I am not moderating this year. But the gentleman from the School Boards Association, the gentleman from NISCUS, and oh my goodness, I forget who the third, but the three that are going to talk about school budgets and finance. So it's really worth getting out there tonight just to support our kids and see our kids, but the content for the meeting is going to be great and the the food isn't bad either. Moving down, musical theater event. This is a lot of credit to be given to Diane Havering and the music department. Met with her last year towards the end of the school year and then a few times beginning of this school year, talking about having to have something for our kids who normally participate in the musical for them to do this year. We didn't want it to be a case where there was nothing for them and then they don't come back. So that event that's that's listed in your agenda there, you can click on the link and see. But it's an evening of musical theater and it's going to be at The Strand, and it's March thirtieth, and she has, as it says on the flyer, twenty-one students in grade seven through twelve doing some songs from different plays, and you can see the list on that flyer as well. As you know, The Strand seats several people fewer than our auditorium does. So seating will be a premium. I think it would be great if the board was represented. But we are trying to prioritize letting the parents of the kids get in there to see their kids, but it would be great to really jam pack that place on that night. And knowing that we're going to have a brand new auditorium next year, I really commend Diane on the work that she did. She reached out to the kids, found out what they wanted to do because we had we had thrown a few different ideas around to keep the kids involved during this gap year, but we just don't have that auditorium. So kudos to her, and if you get out to see that event, I'll be there, but I hope that some of you get to get out there. Maybe some of your kids are even in it. I'm not sure. I haven't seen the list of student participants. Going down, the twenty-three twenty-four Wish We Bosse's fiscal plan, need to get that to you. That is one of the items you vote on on April twenty-fifth, which is the required Bosse's budget and board member vote. That's the statutory date that all school districts have to meet on. So that's on there, and we need to have a little discussion. Kelly and I had put that on our schedule for eight AM. But that was prior to virtual meetings, no longer being allowed unless you have a state of emergency. And we're certainly hoping we don't have a state of emergency on April twenty-fifth like we do this evening. So I want to open it up just for a second to see if if eight AM makes sense, or if six AM makes sense, or if six PM makes sense. We have to have a quorum on that day to vote on that Bosse's budget. So I don't know if people have their calendars that far ahead. But if if we can get some opinions on what might work, that would be fantastic. It's about five minutes, the whole meeting.
Dan, what date was that again?
It's April twenty-fifth.
Okay. Eight AM is usually a fine time for me.
I could do that as well, eight AM.
I can also.
That gets me.
I will do my best. Be there.
Where do we meet for something like that?
Do it right in my office. We would do it right in my office unless Kelly tells me that's not what I'm supposed to say. No, it's it's a quick meeting. It's five to ten minutes. There's those two resolutions. You vote on the budget and the board members, and then and then you're done. There'd be no other business that day unless there's something that pops up that's emergency business we have to do. I think that gave us four. I heard the three ladies said they could make it.
I'll I'll do my best to be there, Dan. I shouldn't, it shouldn't be a problem.
For events?
I have an eye doctor appointment in Granville at eight o'clock. Sorry.
Boy, you're usually the one I count on, the retired gentleman.
I can't make it. I've I've work at that point.
Yeah, if we go earlier, if we go seven thirty, does that help anybody? Does that get us to five?
I can make that.
Seven thirty would be a hundred percent better for me.
So how about it, ladies?
That that's fine with me.
If I can get my people out of the house and to school.
I was just going to say there's going to be some bribery involved here, I think, yes.
So Kelly, we'll change that posting for that for seven thirty, and we'll designate the the location as the District Superintendent's Office. Okay. And if something changes and we don't have a quorum in the morning, we got to meet sometime during that day. So we might be doing a seven PM thing for five minutes, but I think we can get it done in the morning. All right, awesome. And I have one, one last item. So just a quick update on strategic planning. So I just wanted to take a look at the timeline of that. So the strategic planning, as as board members who were on the board last year know, was was one of the goals of the board, was to have a strategic plan in place. We didn't get to that work last year, and there was plenty to do last year. We were focused on having our kids in school and being open. And we did that successfully. So that work carries on. The board's been getting updates weekly on progress since November eleventh. And we did talk about that with our administrative cabinet in the months of December and January. And on February fifteenth, it was it was released out to the school community through the DSDMT, the District Shared Decision Making Team. During that meeting, the information was provided that we were moving forward with a consultant to do that work. And then just last Friday, we did the public whole school community announcement of that information. So and and many of you have had your interviews. So they've interviewed the board and some of the admin, if not all of the admin. Next will be the rest of the faculty and staff. It includes surveying of the entire faculty and staff. And then it does students from grades four through twelve, and then parents after that. So I am not part of the developing of the questions, and that's on purpose, so you that you folks can speak openly and candidly, and so can everybody who answers the survey or who speaks directly with the consultant through a focus group or a focus phone interview. So I just wanted to give that update. In the end, what I will get to see is So I just wanted to give that update. In the end, what I will get to see is a report once the information has been gathered. But that's on purpose so that I'm not steering that plan until we got, we have the data and the feedback from all the, all the groups. And then it'll be a collaborative operation after that between the board and the superintendent, as well as our faculty and staff and other stakeholders. So there's going to be a lot of work. It's going to happen quickly, but we've been talking, the board was talking about it, I think, prior to even hiring me, because it was in those 21, 22 goals, which were, were being completed about the time that you were first meeting me as the superintendent. Any, if there's any questions or anything else that folks need to hear about the strategic plannings, happy to answer them.
Dan, just one quick question on that. How did you happen to choose the third-party organization that you guys did? And just from our conversations, they obviously specialize in this type of thing. Will our data be published inclusive of a larger research study they're doing, or?
No, so, so my understanding of that, when it comes out, that, 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 that report is for us, it's not part of a larger body of research. Although I would be open to it being compared to a larger body of research, because that, that makes sense. That, I think that's good information for all of us to have. How we compare it to what other, what other people are doing as far as initiatives and strategic planning. So the process really started rolling for us this fall. I was able to, to meet a couple of consultants, and then came back and had a conversation with Kevin and Mike about a few, and then we sat and met with two different consulting firms, one from, one that's, that's local, and, and then the one that's from a little bit farther away. In the end, through the two presentations and interviews, it became very clear that there was one that was ready to do the work right away and one that was hadn't done as much of this work kind of in the fashion that we were looking for. So that's, that's, that was the main factor that separated the two, and we came down to the final decision on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Got it. I'm good, Jeff.
You all set?
I am.
Okay. I just had one thing to put out. We did meet an executive session last week. We're going to table that. We're going to need, and this is pertaining to a contract issue with Mr. Ward's contract. I think we're going to have a need to meet as soon as possible so we can discuss it further. And I did talk with Dan about that, and I want to get that taken care of as soon as possible. So if we can come up with a date in the next few days or maybe next week, that we can discuss that so we can be in tune to our discussion in an executive session. So we'll, we'll communicate via email or however we're going to do it, just to see if we come up with a date to finalize that discussion and get that taken care of. Okay, that's, that's all I have at this point in time. Does anybody have any other questions?
Yep.
Mr. Ward, you're all set with your report?
I am, but I want to say one thing that, that I would be remiss if I didn't say it. I just want to congratulate both Jim Murray and Mike DiCaprio. Tenure is, is, is quite an accomplishment. So I want to thank them for their work and let them both know. I know Mike's not here. I'm not sure if Jim is or not. He may not be. But I want to let them know that I appreciate the work. The district appreciates your work, and we look forward to a long and fruitful relationship. So this is just the beginning. It's, it's, it's not the end of anything. It's the beginning of, of a lot of great work that we're going to do together. So congratulations to both of you, both Mike and to Jim.
Congratulations, Mike. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I really am done, Jeff.
So we do not have a need for executive session. That's correct, right, Mr. Ward? Okay, and that concludes our board meeting for today. Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Vince, seconded by? It's so tough to, Mike? All in favor? All right, have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Night, everybody.
Good.